Hello.
I have eight fifty-eight.
All right, I'll call this meeting the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Delka?
Here.
Here.
Here. Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one of my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertainer motion on the agenda as proposed or amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, the agenda is approved. Next is public comments. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak to the board at this time on something that is not an agenda item? Is there first anyone in the room today?
One person.
Okay.
They're not speaking.
Okay. All right, anybody online that wishes to speak during public comments on something that's not an agenda item? All right, hearing none. We will move on to claims and payments.
Good morning, James Perry Finance Director. The total expenditures for this week, three hundred and sixteen thousand, four fifty-one eighty-four. That is made up of secondary roads, seventy-five thousand, sixty-one dollars, thirty-three cents. Sheriff's Department, one hundred and forty thousand, three ninety-seven. And maintenance, nine thousand, six seventy-four. Everything looked normal.
Everything seemed normal?
Sorry, entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Next we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas County Engineer.
Good morning.
Two things I wanted to report on this morning. The first one is the Cedar River Bridge replacement project that's still going well. Asfro was up there doing some of the paving to get the final tie-in for both lanes of traffic. So we're hoping that by the end of this week or early next week, the new bridge will be open. It is open now, but only one lane of traffic is running on it. It will be running two lanes. We're hopeful by the end of this week or early next week. I also wanted to report that yesterday afternoon, myself, Ryan Brennan, Wayne Even, and Ms. Layland and I attended a meeting with about ten residents in north of Dunkerton in the Wheeler Road area. And the meeting was to discuss the fact that that bridge now has a three-ton embargo on the bridge. And we, the Blackhawk County, we are not going to be able to plow snow with the motorator across the bridge. And of course, there are several families that are just north of the structure that would use the bridge to get to Dunkerton Road to come into town, for example, to come to work. They, of course, are concerned that we are not going to be able to plow the road. We alerted them to the fact that we would not be able to plow the bridge. They called me and asked if they could plow the bridge themselves. And I suggested we meet together. So that was the basis of our meeting yesterday. Yesterday, I did say that I was not in favor of allowing them to plow their own snow across the bridge with apparently one of them has a half-ton truck that would still meet our weight-load requirements and be able to plow. I was not in favor of that. I said that when a resident does not agree with what I'm saying, they can appeal to the Board of Supervisors. I said I had not talked to our attorney. I was very concerned with the liability risk that that would pose if they were to do their own plowing. They did express a desire to come and speak with the Board of Supervisors, and we discussed some of the logistics of how they could accomplish that. Of course, they are also very concerned about the future of the structure because we suspect with bridge, with our consultant, that it's probably just going to be another year or two before that bridge closes permanently. We have no funds to replace the structure right now or no plans. It is not in our five-year plan. However, we have, just recently, in the past month, we did submit this project, this bridge, for some special federal bridge money. This bridge was not selected for that federal bridge money. It did not score high enough in comparison to the other ninety-nine counties' bridges that were submitted. It may be possible in the future that this federal bridge money will be available for years to come in the future. This is special federal bridge money dedicated to deficient bridges in rural areas around the country. So it may be possible that we would receive funding for this structure in the future, provided we apply for it, which we would. At this time, we have no future way to fund the structure. So I just wanted to update you on that. We did leave it with these individuals, with these residents, that we will keep the bridge open this year until there's a noticeable amount of snow. So that would probably mean three or four or five inches of snow. And then at that point, we will place barricades on both sides of the structure and close the road until the spring where we can have it re-inspected, and then it would hopefully be reopened. Can I answer any questions, or would you like to add any comments?
Kathy, I was just going to say how we left it too was you were going to recap the minutes, really, of the meeting for not only the supervisors, but for Mr. Trynen as well, to have an opinion from the county attorney's office on the liability because that was where we saw the major concern. And very much that the residents in the next week or so wanted to be on the agenda to make their concerns aware to the board, that they would like that ability to plow. But it'll be pending, like I say, decision from Mike and some of the information, too, that we can share with them.
I will try and have that summarized by Thursday or Friday of this week.
So has anybody else on the board made aware of this meeting?
So Mr. Rigdon, who, he was the man who called me. He sent you all an email last Thursday afternoon inviting all of you to...
I don't recall seeing one.
Yeah, he did.
Of course, I don't get a lot of the emails because of whatever's going on.
But yeah, the entire board was invited, and I did say to them that I probably only...
I didn't see it.
No, but I...
I don't believe I got it.
Well, you can certainly check, but I certainly make sure you get a copy of that.
I think Mr. Little's brought that up before, that of course, you know, you couldn't walk down here and tell us, too.
Yes, I will do that in the future then.
What was told in the meeting as far as plowing on this bridge? Anything, or did you just tell them to come to the board?
So, Tom, I told them for this year, we will keep the structure open until there's a noticeable amount of snow. Typically, our motorators are not sent out to plow until there's about two inches of snow to be plowed anyway. So we can have some small events here. If we are to get any in the next few weeks, hopefully, there would be less than the two inches. The bridge will still remain open. When we get three or four or five inches of snow piling up in front of or on the structure, that's when we would close it permanently for this winter. That's what we told them yesterday would happen.
So, Lyd just said something to the effect, if I heard her right, I couldn't hear her. She's not coming through very well. They're going to come to the Board of Supervisors, I guess, for what?
Do you want to address that one or do you...
I just think as a group, there were probably, I said, ten or twelve people in the room representing, I think, about ten farms. Just that they wanted to speak to the entire board and make their concerns available to all of us.
Because I think it's highly unlikely they'll be able to plow themselves because of liability, structure-wise, especially when it's deemed not safe, and also for personal liability. So I don't see how we can allow that ever to happen.
And that's really what we discussed at the meeting and said that would be pending a legal counsel would help us as well make that decision, so.
But as a supervisor, I'm relying on the county engineer that knows a lot more about that bridge and the circumstance.
Yeah, we mentioned that as well, Tom.
Sure why it's coming to the board, but we can make decisions if we have to.
Yeah, well, because Kathy said that was the avenue that the residents have when they don't like her decision or don't agree with the decision of her and her department. And I said that as well, that typically, they are the ones with the experience and the expertise that advise the supervisors, and we follow that as much we can. But in this case, we could certainly seek legal counsel to see if there was any opportunity for us to consider otherwise. So thank you, Kathy, for agreeing to go to it.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other department heads or elected officials wish to give an update today? All right, hearing done, we'll move on to the minutes approved for the November tenth meeting.
So moved. Second.
It's removed and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Minutes are approved. Next, there will be three rezoning ordinance hearings coming up a little bit later in the meeting. But next is the consent agenda, this will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved. Second.
It's removed and seconded. Is there anything in the consent agenda anybody wishes to discuss or has questions on? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Next is under other business. This is a motion that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer, be approved and direct chair to sign for the same. Purchase one twenty-twenty-one Ford two-fifty Supercab HD pickup truck in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and three dollars from Withem Ford in Waterloo, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Kathy?
Good morning again, Board. I did send you an email with the information on this request. This comes out of our FY twenty-one budget request. We had budgeted fifty-three thousand for a new three-quarter-ton truck which would be used by our maintenance superintendent. And one of his primary jobs is to make sure that our excavators, our motorators, those vehicles are being fueled as they're doing their work throughout the day, plowing snow or laying rock, whatever, so that they don't need to come in and refuel at a gas station. It's one of his jobs is to make sure that those vehicles remain full of fuel. So we do use this truck for probably four or five years. He would use it, and then it would go to one of the six outshops, at which point it will be used to collect garbage. And we do, as you know, we get a lot of requests for garbage that's thrown in our ditches, couches, refrigerators, appliances, all types of stuff. And we really like the long bed, the eight-foot bed, for this type of usage. We, as I said, we got six bids. We did discard the bid from Stu Hanson because that, when we request the eight-foot bed, we can only get a crew cab in a Dodge. We don't want a truck that long. It's very hard to maneuver it around. Rick comes to the courthouse quite often, so it needs to come and go from the courthouse from downtown Waterloo. It's just easier to not drive that long of a vehicle around. We do like the extended cab where there's just a little bit more room behind the driver's seat for their equipment, since it is similar to an office for them. So I would request that we be allowed to purchase the three-quarter-ton Ford from Withem Ford for thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and three dollars.
So you're going to be retiring one vehicle, then?
Right, so between these two requests, we will be getting rid of two nineteen ninety-five Fords with close to a hundred and eighty thousand miles on them. Those have been in the outshops, and the bodies are getting very rusty, the suspensions. Those, they're just getting old, and they need to be replaced.
Thank you.
There was a motion and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions, Board? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All is opposed. The motion carries. Next is a motion that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer, be approved and direct chair to sign for the same. Purchase one twenty-twenty-one Chevrolet fifteen-hundred crew cab pickup truck in the amount of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars from Withem Chevrolet, La Porte City, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
I did send you information on these bids as well. We did budget thirty-six thousand dollars in our FY twenty-one budget. We received the six bids. This truck is used by our maintenance superintendent. He also has a diesel fuel tank, hundred gallons, that he, just like the other guy, drives around, refuels vehicles. We decided to discard this Stu Hanson Dodge bid because of the payload requirements. This vehicle, as specified by Dodge, would only carry fourteen hundred pounds. We feel that that's too close to the amount of fuel that's being hauled around in the tank. We had previously had a Dodge in the same configuration that went through two pairs of springs in its lifetime before it went out to the shops in the first four years. We discarded that bid and decided to go with the next lowest bid, which would be the truck from Withem Chevrolet. So I would recommend that we be allowed to purchase that Chevrolet for thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. It carries significantly more payload than a Dodge would.
Thank you.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion, Board? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All is opposed, the motion carries. Next is a motion that the best bid received from Drive Line Dubuque, Iowa, in the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty cents for two winged wide-out snow plows be approved and for the chair to sign for the same as recommended by Roy Givin, Maintenance Superintendent.
So moved. Second.
Roy?
Good morning, Board. We did receive four bids for these. And Drive Line was the lowest bid of the four. This is for two plows. One of the plows will be going on our new one-tonner that's expected here at the end of December. And the other plow will be going on one of our three-quarter-ton pickups. So all in all, it'll give us four three-quarter-ton pickups with plows and one one-ton pickup with the plow, once we're all said and done. Any questions?
Board, any questions? All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All is opposed, the motion carries. Next is the motion that the appointment of Vincent Huer be approved and for the Blackhawk County Compensation Board be approved.
So moved. Second.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Who, will Mr. Hoyer be the representative of?
This is from the treasurer's office.
All right, I'll put that in a minute. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, all is opposed, the motion carries. Next is a motion that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kim Veder, Information Technology Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same to purchase four Panasonic Toughbooks for twelve thousand, fifteen dollars and eighty cents from CDW-g to be used by the Conservation Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All right, hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All is opposed, the motion carries. We are now on to our hearings. This is a hearing on proposed ordinance number seven-seven-dash-two-five-four, the McGarvey rezone.
Motion received and placed on file proof of publication.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All is opposed, motion carries. Next is a motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments were received and placed on file.
Second.
Are there any written comments, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Seth.
All right, sorry. Yeah, there was some confusion. We can actually combine. It was supposed to be under one request for McGarvey, but it ended up being two. So I'll just give the report one combined. I think just had some miscommunication, so work with a little better in the future, but okay. So we'll, yeah, we can just do one and combine them. The Planning and Zoning Commission?
At its regular meeting on October twentieth, twenty twenty, reviewed the request by Sean McGarvey to rezone one-point-seven-eight acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to split off a home that was originally built on thirty-five acres and a request to rezone one-point-five-one acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to construct one new single-family home at seven-six-two-five Adams Road, located thirteen hundred feet south of the East Cedar Waps and Adams Road intersection. It was moved by Bojor and seconded by Schaefer to rezone one-point-seven acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to split off a home that was originally built on thirty-five acres and a request to rezone one-point-five-one acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district. The one-point-seven-eight acre is being rezoned from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district to be a split off, a home that was originally built on thirty-five acres. And it's not located in the Hundred Year Flood Plain for agriculture residential district. For the other parcel is partially enclosed in the flood plain, but the applicant indicated they're going to build on the higher ground and not towards the southern edge of the parcel. Yeah, both rezone areas meet the requirements, and Technical Review Committee didn't have any concerns with the request. And I don't know, I may have pasted the Zoom information long, so I sent that to the applicant, so they probably weren't able to log in either. So luckily, I was able to just jump across the street to get here. So, yep, that's the first request.
All right, is there anybody else who wishes to speak during this oral hearing? Or any questions folks have for Seth?
Seth, I just want to understand, you say you're combining these two requests?
Yes, yeah, they should have been under one request, but there was just miscommunication.
So the one-point-seven-eight and the one-point-five-one are both in the same request, and they're going to be under just one ordinance number, the first one?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So will we need to take action on item G, or are we combining these?
No.
Sounds like we're combining them.
Yeah, we're combining them and just doing F and eliminating G.
Okay. Very good. All right, so would I like to make a motion to close the oral hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's removed and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All is opposed, the motion carries. Next was a resolution to suspend the rules requiring that the Board of Supervisors to consider the vote on proposed ordinance at two prior meetings. I heard a motion, was there a second?
Second.
Yes.
It's removed and seconded. Any discussion, questions? Hearing done, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution carries. Next is resolution on the ordinance adoption. The amending ordinance number thirty-six, as amended by Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance, which was adopted for rezone nineteen ninety-nine by adding subsection number two-five-four, or two-four-five to section six, rezoning certain property as described by the above request by Sean McGarvey.
So moved, second.
It's removed and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing done, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the ordinance is adopted. Just to be clear, we don't need to take any action on item G, though.
Correct.
Right, you're right.
Okay. All right, we will move on to item H. This is the hearing on proposed ordinance number seven-seven-dash-two-four-seven. This is the Eilers rezone.
Motion received and placed on file proof of publication.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All is opposed, the motion carries.
Motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
That's removed and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All is opposed, the motion carries. Next is the motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments are received. Any written comments, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
All right, go ahead, Seth.
Okay, I guess Mr. Eilers is on the call, so I guess he was able to follow the instructions. Yes.
So then this will be ordinance number seventy-seven-dash-two-forty-six instead of two-forty-seven?
Correct, it will be, yep. Okay, all right, yeah, this is just a request, rezone one-point-seven-one acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to construct one new single-family home. It was moved by Bojor and seconded by Schaefer to approve the request to rezone one-point-seven-one acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to construct one new single-family home. Motion carried unanimously. The parcel containing the one-point-seven-one acres for the proposed rezone area has been zoned agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance. The immediate area primarily consists of rural homes and farmland. Brumford County is to the north. The surrounding area is zoned agricultural district and AR agricultural residential district to the southeast and west. The property is identified as residential on the future land use map. The rezone area for the property is not located in the Hundred Year Flood Plain. The site has a lease score fifty-three, indicating low agricultural value. Yeah, the applicant's requesting to rezone the one-point-seven-one acres from AR in order to build one new single-family homes. The existing eight-point-one-one acre parcel is large enough to accommodate an additional development lot that will meet the size requirements for the AR by being greater than one-point-five acres in size and wider than a hundred and fifty feet. The applicant later plans to split off the lot from the main parcel through the minor plot process. The proposed reason area is, let's see, yeah, Brian Brennan with the Blackhawk County Engineering noted that there's an existing driveway on the west side of the property. Brennan indicated they would either have to use the existing driveway or move and relocate the driveway. And that's the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Eilers, did you want to say anything about this?
Oh, no, thanks a lot.
We haven't approved it yet.
Board, is there any questions before we close the oral hearing? All right, take a motion on closing the oral and written hearing?
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 The motion carries. Next is a resolution to suspend the rules requiring that the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Next is the resolution on ordinance adoption, number, amending ordinance number thirty-six by adding section number two-four-six to section six, rezoning certain property as described above request as submitted by Galen Eilers.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing done, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Eilers, and you have a good day.
Yep, you too.
And I see that Sean McGarvey has joined us. Just to let you know that your zoning requests were both adopted as well.
Thank you so much. I apologize for being late.
No problem, we understand technology delays.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item I. This is discussion, county preparedness, and possible updates regarding COVID-nineteen.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Just, I'm sorry, my voice is going out a bit these days. So just a brief update on... So just a brief update on where we're at with COVID. Just to start off with the numbers, since we last spoke on, on Tuesday, we have 1,387 cases, and this is from November 10th through November 16th and seven deaths. The Health Department again continues to do a disease investigation and contact tracing, but as I stated, and I don't know if it was on Tuesday last week, but we are, you know, getting to a point whereby we have to be more creative on how to, to reach individuals. At times, people are not answering and at times, by the time we get to the cases, I mean, it's been a couple of days because of just the amount, the volume that we are experiencing. This is not an anomaly to Blackhawk County. This is very, what we're seeing across the larger counties here in Iowa. I've spoke to the Iowa Department of Public Health, and this is something that they have confirmed. Even themselves, they're running into this situation as well. But one of the things that they have agreed is to also provide us with support in terms of disease investigation and contact tracing. So we are working on the logistics of, of that, and I will update you all next week in regards to the plan moving forward. We have also sent out some mail communication. Once we can't reach individuals, we're doing texting. We're, we're trying every, every different angles to, to reach individuals, but again, with our cases, the volume is, is, is very, is very high, as you've seen. So with the governor, governor's update yesterday, we will work with our restaurants and bars and other businesses to ensure that understanding of, of the guidance and also implementation. I've been getting also a lot of questions about if this guidance also applies to the Iowa High School, what is it, the state association, the championships that's going on at UNI. And, and I received confirmation last night from the governor's office that it does apply. And what I'm talking about is the, the spectator guidance. Only two spectators permitted for each high school athlete, performer or competitor, and must wear a mask and maintain six feet distance from other spectators. And I've relayed that information to President Nook at UNI. So with that, we're also just continue to increase our communication. Have a, a couple of interviews with KWW while the angle is going to be really on the holidays and what people need to do. And, and really, we, we're, we're recommending that people try and be as creative as possible for the holidays, to limit the social gatherings for Thanksgiving. And I, I know that's very difficult. I myself love seeing my family that are, you know, in the, in the East Coast, but this is, this is something very serious. And so we are recommending that just immediate households stay together and, and celebrate in a way that's more, that's safe in regards to reducing the measures of, reducing the spread of COVID-19. So limit the number of attendees as much as possible to allow people from different households to remain at least six feet apart at all times. And if people are having guests, we are also recommending that the guests do wear face masks and should avoid direct contact, including handshakes and hugs and with other not from their households. So with that, let's see, Grow Cedar Valley is hosting a town hall meeting this Thursday. That is going to be with myself and healthcare CEOs Pam Delagardel and Jack Doosanberry. We're going to talk about what we're seeing in terms of COVID trends and also hospitals. The hospitals are getting to a point where they're reaching capacity. And so this, again, I don't know how and how many different ways to communicate the seriousness of this situation, but we're, we're doing our best to just convey that because we don't want the hospitals to reach capacity where people are in need with, of, of other care outside of COVID and we're not able to, to, to get, get those individuals the, the care that they need immediately. So that's what I have for COVID. In terms of the overall Health Department, we, we are, you know, funny enough, we are able to, what is it, recruit for our vacancies. So we're seeing quite a bit of increase, recent increase in terms of applicants for our vacancies. So that's exciting. We are working towards public health accreditation still in the midst of this pandemic. So I'm very, I'm very optimistic about where we will land, where we will land. But we also have retirements. Ms. Eileen Daly, Deputy Director, will be retiring the end of December. Eileen has been really an extraordinary person to me. She's, she's been really the person that has helped the day-to-day operations as well to give me that opportunity to be out in the community and, and engage. So we will be recruiting for a deputy director. We have another retirement, Cindy Froheim, who will be retiring as well. Cindy is a clerk here at the Health Department. She's dedicated numerous years. So we, we are also seeing some upcoming retirements. And, you know, I'm excited for these individuals, but these are very hard shoes to fill. And so I just, I, I look forward to, you know, their, their retirement celebration, but not only that, just supporting staff with day-to-day operations and, and the pandemic. So this is where we are in terms of COVID and Health Department.
So, so, now, Fisa, let me understand that you said that, so the playoff games, the only people that'll be allowed is family members?
Yes, so according to the, the guidance, it's only two spectators permitted for each high school athlete. So whether it's a family member or friend, they can only be two.
So will that be forwarded on to the Waterloo Blackhawks?
So the Waterloo Blackhawks, great question. I actually had a conversation with Mayor Hart last night. The Waterloo Blackhawks, based on the, the guidance for, for you, for this current new guidance, they will not be able to play because they don't fall in the categories of high school, college or professional sports. So any youth and adult group sporting and recreational gatherings are prohibited except for high school, college and professional sports. And so that's one of the things Mayor Hart and I were discussing because I wasn't, I, I, I don't believe they fit in these categories, and so they will not be permitted to.
You're saying they won't be playing at all?
No.
So what's the difference between that and, tell me the difference between Waterloo Blackhawks and Iowa Hawkeyes, other than one's hockey and one's football?
So Iowa Hawkeyes, which, which one is that? I mean, so any, if, if they don't fit in this guidance, whether they're Waterloo Blackhawks or Iowa Hawkeyes, they shouldn't be playing unless there are a high school, college or professional sports. So the Iowa Hawkeyes, can someone clarify for me what they?
They're college. They're college football.
I was like, I'm sorry, I'm not really a, a sports, yeah. So if they're college, they, yeah, yeah. And, and I, I, I get your, I get your statement now, Supervisor White.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. So again, we will continue to do our best, you know, our, our role really is to emphasize the implementation of, of the guidance and the education. And so we do do significant outreach and then we look at plans. And, you know, we, we, we just do our best. But this is, again, what you're seeing is a trend that's going on across different counties, the larger counties here in, in Iowa. It's, it's, it's not an anomaly to, to Blackhawk County, but as the local Health Department, our, our responsibilities are to our constituents and we'll continue to do what, whatever we need to do to ensure that our hospitals are, do, do not reach that capacity because that's, that, that would be problematic.
Now, Fisa, when did you say the Grow Cedar Valley forum was going to be, that they, that you were speaking to this?
I can't, I can't hear Supervisor Leyland.
When did you say the Grow Cedar Valley event was on Thursday?
Yes, yes, that will be on Thursday. And that is going to be from nine to 10:00. And I can forward you the Zoom.
Thank you.
Information, yeah. So it's from nine to 10:00.
Board, two things that I just wanted to bring up. One is just to send out a reminder to our staff that even, that they need to have a mask on if, even if they're sitting at their own workstation, if that's a workstation that's interacting directly with the public, where the, the public's coming up to the window, even if there's plexiglass, that's, we're great to have that extra mitigation effort, but, but we do need masks in, in those situations. And so we just want to remind folks, especially now as things are surging, we think that, that, that having this mask policy in place for the courthouse has, has really greatly improved the safety of our people, which is why we haven't seen really large numbers coming out. And so, but, but just to send out a reminder to all of our departments, just to make sure that folks are complying because it's, people are getting exhausted of it, but, but the, I'm hopeful that the end is in sight coming this spring. And so we just need to stay strong these last number of months. The other thing I just wanted to, and I'm not sure what, what the right answer is, but I just want us to be thinking about it. I am definitely worried, you know, it's, it's a very high level of community spread in the community right now. And, you know, we need to keep educating people about, about how to safely celebrate the holidays, but we know human nature, and I'm worried about there being another bump in this surge following the holidays. And I just want us to take this week going into next week's meeting, just to think about whether there is anything we want to do to temporarily alter functions, particularly at the courthouse where the largest amount of public comes in for a short period of time following, following the holiday. And so that's just something for us to think about this week going into next week's meeting to discuss.
Well, Chris, and I would like to add, while we were talking about reminding people of their masks, I want to thank the staff. I said, I think our staff has done an excellent job of serving the public and, and meeting the needs of our residents, as well as considering all the things that, the precautions that we, they need to take and we need to take going forward, just to keep our courthouse open and the services provided. And I said, the departments, I think, have been doing a great job of managing any incidents that have happened, and our staff's doing a great job from a maintenance standpoint of trying to keep areas sanitized and doing extra precautions in that as well. So I just don't think we can thank people enough for all the efforts they are doing. So thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well said. Is there, is there anything else anybody has questions on or they'd like to raise under this discussion item?
I'd like to bring up the point about moving one of the guards downstairs out to Pinecrest. The guard that's working, or one of the, not the guard, I shouldn't say guard, I should say sheriff deputy out there. We need a sheriff deputy out there. That guard has happened to face too much crap that she shouldn't have to be putting up with.
Do you want to have discussions at future meeting about that?
No, I want it done today.
Well, it's the first I've heard of it, so I'd need more information.
Well, I didn't hear about it a lot of stuff too. I'm out there every day. I check on her.
I'm glad you do and thank you for doing that. I'm just saying it's the first I've heard of it, so to just say yes, go do it. I'd like more information. Not doubting it.
That's why you tell she gets shot or something happens to her.
That's what I mean.
That's, she's had threats. She's had people waiting outside when she gets off work. Now, is that enough? She's had people wait across the street.
This is the first I've heard of it, Craig, and so that's what I'm just saying.
Well, if you were in here, you'd hear it. She calls in every day and gives us what's going on.
Well, she gives it to someone, she doesn't give it to me.
Well, I, I didn't get the information about Kathy.
Well, we can check your email for that. I'm sorry if you didn't get it.
I've, I've talked to the IT about my email. My email's all screwed up. They've tried to fix it before.
You know, we've had nobody out there for 30, 40, 50 years. We put somebody out there and now all of a sudden we got troubles. Maybe we should have thought about that before we put somebody out there. Half the state's not even in the building. They're working from their homes. So I don't know where all the problems are coming from.
Tom, that, that mainly from people that want to go someplace in the building. She's, she's been told by the people out there in the Health Department to ask where the, where, where are you going? And that lights their fuse, apparently.
Well, I think maybe the state ought to have themselves an office down there setting up so they could tell their people in their offices where they need to go.
I've talked to, I've talked to people out there and they just turn around and walk away that are with DHS and stuff. Yeah, they should have that window open. I've even talked to, when we had our mental health meeting last month, the DHS person was there from the state and I said something to it, and she goes, "We are not open." End of, end of story.
I'd say just pull her out of there then.
Pardon me?
Just remove someone? Is that what you're thinking? Remove someone from the building? Just remove them?
We were at any trouble before until we put somebody out there. I thought it was a mistake to begin with, but.
I guess I'd like a little more information then on the whole situation before we make a decision on either way.
I, it sounds like we've got kind of proposals in, in both different directions. One is to remove everyone, one is to add more, more people. So if we could, I think, please put those ideas together this week so we can discuss it at next week's meeting to, to take action if, if we determine.
Yeah, obviously, we don't have it on today's agenda, so, yeah, we'd need to have some more discussion. Is that okay?
I'm confused. I, I guess I heard a lot about Pinecrest and the guard, and I, I can go and talk to Louis because I haven't heard any complaints at my level. So sorry, I was asking questions via chat because I wanted clarity, but I can do that also to just get some information about what's going on because I would appreciate to at least, you know, since I'm the department head here, to just know what's going on because I, I haven't heard any complaint whatsoever. This is my first time hearing there's a situation.
Thank you. And Rory, I assume you'd be involved in that too?
Rory.
Yeah, Rory.
Good morning again, Board. Rory Givens, committee superintendent. To my knowledge, or to our department's knowledge, it had been brought to our attention earlier on that there was concerns of people approaching the guard and asking what they were supposed to do. I know that DHS had a conversation with the guard, put a note up down there with a phone number and explained to the guard that the only thing that they, that she needs to do is point to this note that has a phone number for people to call. And that's the last conversation that I've had with regards to how the flow of traffic is coming into that building. Now, I know that our Security Committee meeting has had a few different meetings with regards to Pinecrest and whether or not armed guard is needed in that facility with the changes in the law. My recommendation would be is to get that committee back together and discuss that as an option, or what options are available moving forward to address the situation over. situation over there at Pinecrest.
Could you, before, I guess, getting that committee together, I guess, get this, some type of report, I guess, to the board on what the situation is or what's occurred that, with the threats and that type of thing, just at least to let us know?
Yeah, I can certainly reach out to Permar and see what, you know, Lois, the, the person over there does a good job writing up reports. And I haven't seen any reports on threats, but I will reach out and see what that is and get it back to the board.
You mentioned earlier on, you'd heard about some of this. And when you say earlier on?
Just within the past few months, as, as traffic has increased into that facility, there's times when we might have ninety people a day coming in there. And there was concerns of all those people approaching the guard, and the guard essentially being the receptionist for that building, which isn't necessarily the case. That's not the intent that the county had for this, for this person. And so DHS had placed a sign for the public to, to call this number if you need to speak with somebody because DHS is still closed. I can't speak so much for the Health Department and how they do their flow with people coming in, but with DHS, they are essentially just, people are supposed to call a phone number and get their attention.
So the traffic, you say about ninety people?
I've heard numbers up to about ninety per day.
Can you guess?
Who are, who are they actually seeing, Rory?
Yeah. Where are those ninety coming from?
I think primarily, and again, I can't speak so much for, for the Health Department. If it's clinic days, there, there might be a surge, you know, during those particular days. But I think primarily, people are coming in to seek assistance from DHS. And again, those people are directed to a, a notice that's, that's hung up there, that, of instructions that they're supposed to do. So it really isn't up to the guard to provide any more information other than to say, here's the number, call this number. Now, you can imagine that people coming into a building, if they're hearing that, I can see where that would maybe increase their frustration. And that's maybe what we're seeing.
I didn't, I didn't know DHS had that many employees there. The ones I've been dealing with, yesterday meetings and so forth, they're at home yet. So I don't know who they're seeing out there.
I, I don't think they're actually seeing many people from the public, and I'm not sure how many employees they actually have there. I do know they have several working from home. But again, I think, you know, the numbers that we're seeing in that building are, are people coming in for services. And then, again, they're being directed to a notice that's, that's posted to, to contact this number. And then they're.
Well, you make contact with DHS and tell them there's a concern out there, and they need to take care of it.
I, and, and I did do that a few weeks back, and they did have a, a meeting with the security guard, just to stress that they don't need anything from, from that person other than she can point to the notice. And, and that's really the only involvement that this guard is to have with the public coming in, and then just making sure that people have masks. And again, that was, the, the original intent of the guard at Pinecrest was not so much to, to manage the entryway at this facility. It was really just to have a guard available at that facility roaming throughout. But unfortunately, with COVID, it's turned more into making sure that when people come in, that they have the appropriate safety measures in place. And that's really what it's turned into since, since COVID came about. But again, that wasn't originally the intent of this, this guard. It just happened to turn out that way.
If you could verify the numbers, though, approximately, how many people are coming in there? And if that is DHS, people are not sure would help.
Yeah. And again, DHS has been communicating with the guards, with the guard there, and their expectations are that this guard doesn't have to have any interaction with the public other than saying, there's the notice, call that number.
And how frustrated would you get if you were out there and you point, oh, there, there's what you do?
Yeah, and that's what I mean.
That, in today's world, everybody's about at the end of their rope, and they're, they're tired, they're upset, and you're pissing them off just a little bit more by doing that.
Yep. I don't disagree at all. As I mentioned, I mean, you can imagine the frustration of people that coming in, wanting services and seeing a notice there. But at the end of the day, I don't know, you know, being that DHS is closed, short of posting something outside, or I.
Yeah, I would.
Not letting them in the building.
I was going to suggest, maybe since the greatest frustration seems to be coming, people come in expecting to see someone at DHS and then be upset, which would be understandable. But if we post, at least experiment, see if it minimizes the people coming into the building. If we post a large, a sandwich board with a very large sign outside the building, we'll give DHS a notice of where to call and that their offices are, are closed. And then that might, you know, it's not going to stop every, some people might still be upset and come in and ask, try and ask someone questions. But it might keep some of the folks from coming away if they see that right away.
Rory, why don't you invite somebody from DHS to come to the Board of Supervisors next week, so we can discuss it with them and let them know that we, as owners of the building, we, and they need to address it.
Yep, I can do that.
So I, I'm not sure who's in charge out there, but whoever it is, why don't you invite them to the board meeting next Tuesday?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rory.
All right, is there anything else regarding COVID-19 updates that anybody from the board would like to discuss? All right, moving on to any reports or information from the board. I do want to share our condolences with you, Mr. Veder, on the passing of your father. Our, our thoughts are all with you and, and your family right now.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Also, you can add condolences out to the Schultz family. She was a classmate of mine. She was at a country view for many years. And the Mankin family from Dyke was a classmate of mine, like.
Motion to adjourn. Any other reports? All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.